Go ahead and call the Planning Commission to order. Could we start with the roll call, please?
Commissioner Bernhardt? Commissioner Hammerhead?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
And Chairman Hall?
Here. Okay. Would you all please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. All together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Members of the audience are invited to speak on any item on or off the agenda. If the item is an agenda item, you will be permitted the opportunity to address the Planning Commission when the matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter which is not on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so at the public comment section. When wishing to address the Planning Commission, please rise, state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of five minutes. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda right now during the public appearances aspect of the meeting? Okay. We'll now go to the consent calendar. Approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes for November 13, 2019, and December 11, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? I saw move to approve. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
If you have a second and a motion, please tally the vote.
Commissioner Hammerhead?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Chairman Hall? Aye.
And we'll let the record reflect that council commissions.
Commissioner North?
Thank you. Has arrived. It's been one of those days.
It really has been.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and go to the news business. If there's no objection, I would like to rearrange the agenda and make D2 the first item and D1 the second item. Do I need to do that by a motion or can it just be my decision? Okay. So that's what I would like to do. I'd like to change D2 to D1 and D1 to D2. Moving that forward. Public hearing for a discussion of action amendment to the specific plan for Victoria Ranch subdivision, SPVR. The applicant is requesting permission to change the theme tree that runs along Ayton Road within the city of Imperial, California, 92251. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:33. Staff report, please.
Commissioners, members of the public, the item for you is a request to amend a specific plan for Victoria Ranch subdivision. The applicant, Tori Leslie, submitted for the amendment to change a theme tree that is currently the Mexican palm to the Mediterranean fan palm. The tree that was originally approved for the theme tree was the Mexican palm and because the roots grow down into the ground, there's distribution lines that run and the IID has not approved for the -- to continue planting the Mexican palm tree. And they need to change the fan palm and they need to change the tree to the Mediterranean fan palm. Any questions?
Yeah. I've read my paperwork. Do I have anybody from the public that would like to testify on this matter? I'll ask one question. Othon, IID did approve this replacement tree, correct? They've done their research and they're okay with the new tree.
That is correct. In your package, you should have that letter from IID approving this type of tree.
Okey-dokey. All right. If there's no other questions or is there any discussion by council? Oh, wait. We'll get to that in just a second. So if there's no more testimony, I'll close the public hearing at 6:35. And commissioners, would you like to discuss anything? Any comments on this? All righty. Hearing no discussion on it, I'll take a motion. The recommended action is to approve the resolution. I will go ahead and take a motion now from one of the commissioners.
Motion to approve specific plan amendment replacement of tree tree for a Mexican palm to Mediterranean fan palm.
Do I have a motion? Second. I have two seconds. They were almost there. Ma'am, would you please take the vote?
Commissioner Hammerhead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerhead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So that takes care of item D1. Now to the amended D2. It's a public hearing discussion action conditional use permit, 19 TAC 06, time extension and amendments to conditions of approval request for CUP 19 TAC 06. The applicant is requesting more time to complete improvements that are tied to the annexation and conditional use permit. If the time extension is not granted, then there will be a potential revocation of the conditional use permit by the Planning Commission for the trucking facility operation business at 2475 Clark Road, Imperial, California, 92251. I'll go ahead and open public hearing at 6:36. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, the item for you is for the trucking facilities that is located--
Mr. Moore? Dennis Marita, City Attorney. Before you get to your staff report, I think we're all a little bit taken back by the fact that neither the proponent is here nor the folks who have been present, I'm informed, for every single thing dealing with this. And so before you get -- and I want to be sure that our record is clear about the background. And so before you get into the staff report relating to the request for a time extension, the request to amend the CUP, and then the staff's request to revoke, can you state for the record what we did to give people notice of the fact that there was going to be a public hearing at this date and time? And so I think that would be helpful in terms of the fact that we gave proper notice and people chose not to come.
California state law requires that items of this matter, for example, conditional use permits, specific plan amendments, be noticed to parcels within 300 feet from the proposed project site. This instance, it's a conditional use permit amendment, so parcels within 300 feet were noticed. Notices were sent out. I can't give you the exact date. Give me one second. Wednesday, February 26 via mail, along with noticing through the Imperial Valley Press, which was also sent out on February 26, noticed on Sunday, February -- no, March 1. And you have to, by state law, give the parcels within 300 feet notice 10 days prior. So they were given more than 10 days' notice. The applicant was also informed via email multiple times that his item was going to be today. And we also had residents email us their photos, videos, as it states inside the staff report. Any questions?
The records from the property owner receiving the emails, like return emails saying thanks, we got it?
No. Not usually for any kind of public hearing. They don't usually, you know, send an email. No. Saying that they received the notice. Usually they'll come in in person or they'll give a phone call.
And you got nothing? No?
Nothing. No comments for or -- well, we do have comments against.
Also, for the record, a text was sent to the applicant and he confirmed. I sent him the date and the time and he's confirmed as okay.
I think your applicant is walking in right now.
Okay. So I understand that Mr. Felix just entered the room. So Mr. Felix?
Yeah.
We're at the point of the proceedings where we just started and staff is about to give their staff report. Yeah. Before we do that, Mr. Felix, I understa -- do you have a translator?
Yes, my-- Yes.
Okay. So are you going to be translating for him? So to the -- and what I mean by that is to the extent Mr. Felix makes a presentation, will he be making that presentation in Spanish?
Yes, he will.
Okay. And you will be translating then?
Yes, I'll translate.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to stand and raise your right hand.
Okay.
Okay. Do you -- how old are you, by the way?
I'm 16.
16?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not so sure this oath sticks to a minor, but we're going to do it anyway. Okay. Do you affirm that you will well and faithfully translate from Spanish to English and English to Spanish in the manner now pending before the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Now what I'm going to ask you to do -- oh, you can sit down or lower your hand maybe. When you translate, we want a word-for-word translation. So you should explain to your father that he should speak in short phrases or short sentences so that you can then translate word for word. What we don't want is him speaking in paragraphs and then you trying to summarize what he wants to say. We don't want to put the burden on you to try to figure out what your dad is trying to say. Your only job is to communicate to the Planning Commission in English what your father said in Spanish, word for word. So we don't want you to guess at what you think your father is trying to communicate. Okay? Does that sound fair?
Yes, that sounds fair.
Okay. So now, before you came in, the matter was called and we're at the point of the proceeding where the staff was about to give its report.
Chairman? It's for the name.
Okay. Can you state -- I'm sorry. I should have got -- can you state your name for the record?
Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
An address?
Yes.
My name is Paulette Felix and I live here in El Centro. Okay? Okay. My full address here in El Centro is 253 West Horn Road, El Centro, California, with the SIP code 92243.
Thank you very much.
Staff report, please. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, the item before you is for the trucking facility located on 2475 Clark Road. A CUP, as you may be aware, a CUP was granted with conditions of approval for this facility. The conditions in which Mr. Felix agreed had to be completed within one year following LAFCO approval, which ended January 25, 2020. In your package, there is a notice of violation sent to Mr. Felix outlining which conditions were not fulfilled, also giving Mr. Felix additional 35 days to complete, which ended on March 1, 2020. In your package, you have the notice of violation, which you have seven items, and those are the conditions that were not fulfilled. For the record, Mr. Felix submitted an application for time extension and amendments to conditions of approval on January 27, 2020, and provided documentation that states that the project was not moving forward because IID application and design process and construction related to the relocation of the power lines to allow these improvements on Clark Road. The records indicate that Mr. Felix paid the initial engineering fee March 5, 2019, and also records show that the relocation of the poles completion was July 15, 2019. We also, in your package, you have proposals from a contractor dated back in September 2019. In addition, residents have also expressed concerns with the hours of operation, which is a clear violation of the conditions of approval. Viewed as surveillance were provided by a nearby resident and he's not here to confirm. Staff recommends to deny the time extension, deny the conditional -- the amendments to the conditional -- amendments to the conditions of approval, and revoke the conditional use permit. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I think by way of procedure, the first item I think you should focus on is the time extension and then the request for the amendment to the conditions and the revocation can be taken up after that. But I think at the outset, you should take up the matter, the request for the time extension.
Okay. We will do so. We'll attack these as three separate items or three individual items right here. And we'll go ahead and then open up the public testimony with respect to the time extension. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about the time extension? We'll take proponents first and then opponents, and then the proponent will have a chance to rebut. So is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the time extension? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Felix?
Yes.
You look like you're about to speak.
Yeah. This is law.
We're either going to use the translator or we're not.
No problem.
So we're not going to mix and match.
Okay.
So if you want to use your daughter for a translator, she should translate for you what the chairman says. And so I gather, whether or not-- I say that you understand that this is your time to speak to your request for the time extension.
Okay.
She hasn't-- Okay. So if someone asks you a question and you think you understand it, let your daughter translate anyway so we can kind of get in the habit of using her to translate. Okay. So just as a reminder, since he's going to speak now in favor of getting a time extension, ask him to speak in short phrases and sentences. So then you can -- so then you're going to be at the micro -- so you should really be at the microphone, right?
So you really do.
And you're going to be translating and telling the county -- the commissioners in English what your father's saying in Spanish.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. My name is Justo Feliz, the yard in the Clark, 2475 Clark Road. Okay? The time extensions he's asking-- Because of the traffic in LA. Because sometimes it's impossible to try and be able to compete with the time. And Friday and Saturday. Because sometimes, because of the traffic in LA, the drivers will be arriving late to the yard.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's some confusion. I think he is speaking to his second request to amend the conditions.
Right.
And I think one of the conditions relates to his hours of operation. And I think he's speaking to hours of operation. What we want to hear about is staff that the one year -- I think as the staff report indicated, the one-year period ran in January of this year. One of Mr. Felix's requests was a time extension to the period of time he had to complete the conditions of approval. So that's the matter that is currently before you.
Okay.
And so Mr. Felix should speak to the fact that he wants more time to complete the conditions of approval.
Okay. De marzo hasta julio duramos para cambiar los postes. En marzo pusimos la aplicación al IID.
So from March to June, he lasted to change the post.
Okay. En agosto terminaron de poner los postes.
In August, they finished putting the post up.
En principios de febrero, de este de septiembre empezamos los trámites con los que hicieron el drenaje y el agua.
And in beginning of September, they started the paperwork to start the--
The sewer, the water.
The sewer for the water, for IID.
Pero nos encontramos con un problema porque teníamos que pasar por abajo del canal del IID.
But he had a problem because he had to go underneath the pipes for IID.
Entonces tuvimos que mandar un request para que nos dieran un permiso especial para que ellos pudieran hacer un taladrar por abajo de la tierra.
So then he had to send a request to IID so that they could go under the pipes of IID.
Y ese permiso nos lo dieron más o menos a fines de octubre.
And that permit was given to him at, en principios?
Ah, fines de octubre.
At the end of October.
El contratista no pudo empezar porque se le murió un familiar.
Then the contractor couldn't start because one of his family members died.
Y él empezó los primeros a mediados de diciembre.
And then he started at the beginning, kind of in the middle of December.
Después de ahí, terminaron el proyecto más o menos en los últimos días de enero.
And after that, they stopped the project at the end of January.
Después de ahí, iban a instalar el hidrante en la parte de atrás de la yarda.
And after that, they were going to install the hydrant in the back of the yard.
Y nos encontramos con la cuestión de que supuestamente la ciudad no le había entregado los planos a los bomberos.
And then they found themselves with another problem that the city had not given the plans to the firefighters.
Entonces, el departamento de bomberos nos paró la instalación del hidrante.
So the department of firefighters stopped the installation of the fire hydrant.
Le mandamos los planos.
They sent them the plans.
Y ellos hicieron una modificación a lo que ya supuestamente habían aprobado.
And they made modifications to what the city had already approved.
Tuvimos que volver a hablar con los contratistas.
They had to talk again with the contractors.
Y el contratista que lo iba a hacer ya no pudo.
And the contractor who was going to do it couldn't do it anymore.
Se contrató otro contratista.
He hired another contractor.
Y ahorita ya está instalado el hidrante de la parte de atrás.
And right now, the fire hydrant is successfully installed in the back of the yard.
Si no hubiera llovido estos días, ya estuviera instalado el hidrante de frente.
And if it hadn't rained these days, then the fire hydrant in the front of the yard would have been installed.
Eso mismo dice, "Nos paró la instalación de la banqueta y el pavimento que ya se tiene contratado de la."
And that same, because of the rain, that's what stopped the pavement and the sidewalk from being installed as well because he already paid that.
Entonces tenemos planificado más o menos.
So he has planned right now.
Si el clima nos deja.
If the climate does change.
Un promedio entre 20 y 40 días en terminar el proyecto.
It'll take about 20 and 40 days to finish the project.
En el tiempo que metimos la aplicación para la extensión de tiempo.
In the time that he put in the application for the extension of time.
No teníamos todavía el contratista para que terminara el proyecto.
He still didn't have the contractor to finish the project.
Ese fue el motivo por el cual nos desesperamos y tuvimos que meter la extensión de tiempo para no fallarles a como lo hemos estado haciendo.
And that was the reason why he put in the application for time extension so that he wouldn't fail the council.
No sé qué problema hay.
He doesn't know what problem there is.
Que cada contratista que contratamos.
That every single contractor he hires.
Ah, se sale del proyecto.
He stops the project midway.
Porque los demás contratistas.
Because the other contractors.
Dicen que no les vamos a pagar.
Say that he's not going to pay them.
Cuando el dinero está depositado en efectivo, en lasco.
When the money is deposited in cash in LAFSCO.
Entonces yo no sé qué persona o quiénes tienen las manos metidas dentro del proyecto.
So he doesn't know who is talking about this with the contractors about the project.
Que hemos batallado demasiado tiempo en conseguir quien haga las cosas.
That he has battled this many times to see who can finish the project.
Ese es uno de los motivos que nos ha tomado tanto tiempo.
That is one of the motives why this has taken a long time.
Tan es así.
That is so.
Que el Jess Carter.
Jess Carter?
Yeah.
That Jess Carter.
Lo tengo demandado en la corte.
Is sued in court.
Porque se le pagó para que pusiera el hidrante.
Because he was paid so that he would put the fire hydrant.
Desde el 2015.
Since 2015.
Y cuando se dio la aprobación de que el proyecto ya se podía poner.
And when the project was approved, that he could put the fire hydrant.
Dio una cotización de 45,000 dólares.
He gave a price of 45,000 dollars.
Por un hidrante.
For only one fire hydrant.
Hasta la fecha.
Until this date.
Ni el sheriff.
Neither the sheriff.
Ni la gente que yo he mandado para que lo notifiquen.
Or the people who he has sent to notify him.
Hemos podido notificarlo para que nos devuelva el dinero.
Have been able to notify him so that he is able to return the money.
Él mismo.
Him.
Se encargó.
Has.
De hablar con el último contratista.
Has said that he has talked to the last contractor.
Que si no hubiéramos firmado el contrato un día anterior.
If they hadn't had signed the contract a day earlier.
También hubiera salido el proyecto.
Had also gone out of the project.
Entonces dile, eso ha sido uno de los problemas que hemos tenido en este proyecto.
So that has been one of the problems that he has battled throughout this project. So that has been one of the problems that he has battled throughout this project.
Les pido una disculpa de mí.
He says sorry.
Pero no ha quedado por mí.
But it hasn't been because of him.
Cuando quieran dile, les puedo hacer llegar todos los correos.
When you guys want, if you guys want, he can send you all the emails.
A compañías que hemos hablado a San Diego.
At all the companies that he has called, even San Diego.
Y sin nombrar todas las del Valle Imperial.
And not to name all the ones in Imperial Valley.
Donde dan cotizaciones.
Where they would send him the, the paper.
Que son una locura de él.
And they're really high, they're crazy.
Entonces, no ha quedado por parte de nosotros.
So it hasn't been because of him.
Y hemos hecho todo lo que hemos podido.
Because he has done his part and all that he can.
Sin más por el momento.
Without another word at the moment.
Thank you. Do I have any comments on the time extension? Any opposition comments on the time extension? Would you please approach and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Darrell Peckel. I was at a five-nine-six Sunflower Way, Imperial, California. Um, I speak not now as the mayor, because I don't have any say-so at this, at that level. I'm coming to you now as a former pla, former planning commission who heard this case in this presentation fi, six years ago. In twenty fif, or five years ago, 2015, um, this gentleman came before us with his first presentation, looking to have the city annexes the land that his, um, business was on and property in that area so that he could move forward. He wanted our support as he was taking it to LAFCO for the annexation. At that time, came up with a comprehensive list of, um, requirements in the form of a CUP that we felt reflected the concerns of the residents in that area. Throughout that time, he was operating under a county business license, on county land. We could not enforce the regulations that we wanted in place as a city because he wasn't under our jurisdiction. But we were visited quite frequently by the residents living in that area and living across from him, um, with concerns about how he was operating the business and with how things were being handled at the county level. They felt like we should be doing more as a city, but we couldn't, it was out of our hands. Um, since that time, I heard him stand up here and say he's been unable to get things done in the last year, and he's right now within a month or two of being done. But he's had five years to complete a project. Admitted, his timeline didn't kick in until the LAFCO annexation was finally approved about a year and a quarter ago. Um, but then nonetheless, he had had four years prior to that to take the steps he knew we asked for, for him to be able to operate this, this business in the city of Imperial. He could have moved ahead and chose not to. The fact that some of his contractors were quoting him more than he wanted to pay is an unfortunate reality of business, and I respect that can make it difficult on a business owner, but nonetheless, throughout those four years, he had plenty of time to take certain steps to move that business forward and have it ready to come into the city. That said, when it was annexed then fi, officially in the spring of 2019, his timeline kicked in. He didn't meet the deadlines, and then he was given a thirty-five-day extension and didn't meet that. I know this because I was actually watching online and I got to hear the report from staff. I've not done any research, I've not looked at anything on this case, I've just kind of waited to see where this was going to go, and I didn't even know this was on your agenda till I happened to tune in to watch you online. And I saw this and thought, no, I need to come down and speak, so forgive me for being here kind of underdressed, but I felt strongly that this was something I needed to come share. As a planning commission, we worked very diligently to come up with a CUP that respected what we thought the citizens of the city of Imperial deserved, the same way you do. And I wanted you to know that everything he's asking for was, was thought out and the timeline was established with all of these concerns in mind. For him to be sitting here to say, today and say, well, I don't have the second fire hydrant in because it rained this week, I don't have the sidewalk in because it rained this week, completely ignores the fact that he's waited for five years to even start the process. So as a citizen of Imperial and sympathetic with other citizens who live in his area, who may not have been able to make it tonight, who may not have been aware that this was going to be on there, um, I know they feel strongly that this man has not acted in good faith in establishing this business in the city, and I feel the CUP should be taken away, should be denied, the extension needs to be denied, the CUP needs to be revoked, he needs to be shut down in the city of Imperial, and give him a chance to see if he can do what he says he's going to do, and then let him come back and try and move forward. Because what he's got on that CUP, there's some significant things that need to be done, and he is not moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let it to you just the time right now, just want to talk about the time issue.
Thank you, so, thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else?
Uh, Robert Malik, Fire Marshal, twenty-five fourteen, University Road. Um, so if you guys look at the CUP under number eleven, right, is, uh, Fire Department recommendations, and, um, we did come in front of Planning Commission before and worked out a timeline, just like Mr. Peckel said, we worked very hard on the timeline and, and was lenient to some issues and, and to give more extensions and whatnot. But, once he was approved by LAFCO to be annexed into the city of Imperial, he has sixty days to fulfill Fire Department's requirements, which were not completed. We didn't push the issue. I talked to Mr. Mora and we said, we'll give the year, the thirty-five days, but you have to understand, without public safety getting the fire hydrants in place, um, is not giving us the tools to protect his investments or the communities around him. Okay? So, um, in turn, we'll talk about the, that, that's where the time extension, and then we can talk about the conditions after.
Individually, so we're talking about time extension only right now?
Yeah, and that's the reason why I believe we've been, um, working with him in the sense that he should have had it done within sixty days, uh, be, him being approved by LAFCO and his states in the CUP. So, we're a year, so.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh six. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Um, I heard comment from Mr. Mora in the staff report with respect to the power line issue.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that the power lines were relocated back in, I think he said July, Mr. Felix said August of two thousand and nineteen.
A record show that it was completed in July fifteen, twenty nineteen.
Now, I understood that that was supposedly a barrier to him completing the road improvements and the sidewalk and, and other things. During his presentation, I heard him talk about some underground IID facilities.
No, he had to go underground IID facility for the sewer lateral.
Okay, well, did you hear his presentation in which he talked about the fact that there were some underground facilities that also presented a barrier to his timely completion? Did, did I misunderstand?
Yes, no, 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 yes, that, you are correct. Um, I don't have in, in the timeline, that, he was, he didn't provide me with those, um, documentations. Um, I don't have any spot of the staff report, um, but yes, it was, uh, one of the things that I had to do, um, it was going under, in an underground, he had to do underground, um, sewer laterals, but he, he completed those, those, uh, improvements.
Oh, so those were completed?
Those were completed, correct.
Okay, so, i, i, so that, that is why we're here then?
No.
At all, that work?
No.
So he, he mentioned the fact that it was a barrier, and if it was a barrier, he overcame that one, because the work was done.
Correct.
All right, any other comments? I'd like to go ahead and close public testimony at seven oh eight. And commissioners, it's your time to ask questions.
So, um, it sounds about, about in October that you knew that you were going to have this project completed by January one, within your time limitations. So how come you didn't come to us before then?
Could you go ahead and approach to your microphone so you could answer, please?
En octubre fue como supiste que.
No, porque en octubre es cuando metimos y nos dieron la aprobación, a fines de octubre. Entonces se suponía que eso lo iban a hacer en una semana.
No, because in October, at the end of October, it was supposed, the application was submitted and it was approved, so that was supposed to happen in a week.
Although, didn't you say that you, you only got one until January twenty?
What application are you talking about?
De qué aplicación estás?
De la IID, para, para escavar por abajo del canal.
The IID, yeah.
Oh, that's the.
Underground, yeah.
So you completed that, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So can you?
No, what I was getting at was, it sounded like he knew in October that he wasn't going to finish this project in time.
So, I mean, he didn't wait until after he got a violation to come before, with the barriers.
To submit for a time extension.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're talking about the time extension, why did he submit anything?
So la extensión, en octubre sabías que no ibas a terminar en enero.
No, porque se suponía que el tiempo que estaba suficiente, porque era octubre, noviembre, diciembre y enero, había tiempo suficiente, hacia cuatro meses, o sea, por eso, en octubre to, todavía se suponía que teníamos el tiempo perfecto.
No, because in October, he still had four months, which was October, November, December, and January, so he thought that there was going to be sufficient time to finish the project.
Porque realmente lo que falta no es nada, dile, es las banquetas, el pavimento y la barra.
Because really, what, what was missing was just the pavement, the sidewalk, and the...
The wall.
The wall.
Entonces se supone que eso es ya rápido, pero no, nosotros no contábamos con que el Fire Department nos iba a detener a poner el hidrante y terminar de conectar el agua.
So he thought that that was going to be sufficient time for it because it was simply easy and quick, but they didn't count with the fact that IID was going to postpone the approval for the fire hydrant.
Entonces, el motivo fue de que como nos pararon el departamento de bomberos porque supuestamente no habíamos entregado los planos, eso nos paró en diciembre. Si ellos no nos dieran parado en diciembre.
So the motive really, um, that stopped him was when he, when the firefighter department...
En enero, a principio de enero.
And then it was...
A principio de enero.
Okay, okay, there we go. So, when the firefighter department stopped the, the planning of putting the fire hydrant in because they didn't receive the correct plans.
Entonces, ahí fue donde nos pararon el proyecto.
So that was when the project was stopped.
Entonces, se hicieron llegar otra vez los planos.
So the plans were sent again to the fire department.
Ellos hicieron la modificación.
They made the modifications.
A las dos semanas lo volvieron a entregar los planos.
And in two weeks, he received the new plans.
Pero la yarda siempre ha tenido.
But the yard has always had...
Veinte mil litros de agua.
Twenty thousand liters of water.
Con que ellos mismos fueron y aprobaron.
That the fire department themselves went and approved.
Hmm, esto lo aprobaron en el 2015.
And they approved this in two thousand fifteen.
Entonces nunca la yarda ha estado desprotegida por falta de agua.
So, so the yard has never been unprotected, uh, for missing water.
¿Algo más?
Another question?
Can I answer your question?
No, that's fine. I do, I just want some clarification, so, plans went, um, as the applicant said, plans were approved by the city or approved by Fire Department, or, and then plans went back to the Fire Department?
Went back, but, yeah, initial requirement that triggered that, the installation of a, a fire hydrant, but it only took two weeks, I mean, it was a pretty quick turnaround. Uh, it was almost at the end of the, uh...
Well, we have the Fire Marshal here, why don't we ask him?
Dile que eso yo nunca he entendido, dile que ellos dieron un plano aprobado ante LAFCO y resultan que después no lo cambiaron, dile, que eso yo no lo he entendido hasta hoy, no lo entiendo.
So that's something that he still doesn't understand up to this day, is how the Fire Department submitted plans to LAFCO and they got approved, but then they had to go back to the Fire Department because they weren't the right ones.
De hecho, dile, ellos aprobaron la vuelta de la bombera.
They actually approved the, the turning of the firefighter truck.
La segunda puerta.
The second door.
Y se les hizo la entrada por donde se les dio el isme para la huella de drenaje a la ciudad.
And there was a door made for them where they could enter, where...
Por el ismen.
Ismen.
De, un ismen, un ismen.
For an isment of the city.
Entonces dile que yo nunca he entendido por qué tuvo que volverse los planos a Fire Department cuando ellos los aprobaron, cuando aprobaron el LAFCO.
So he doesn't understand why the plans went back to the Fire Department when they approved it in front of LAFCO.
Pero en fin, no estoy cuestionando.
So, since we've had several questions for Respire, and my colleague has asked, sir, would you please come up and help answer this question? And I believe that'll help answer your question as well.
So why the plans came back to us?
Yes, that's a good question.
So, prior to being annexed into the city, obviously we're contracted by the city of Imperial to provide fire service, so Imperial County Fire Department provides that service to the city, s, and also we were regulating him from the county side. So yes, twenty thousand, twenty thousand gallon was a requirement in the beginning, but then when we came to LAFCO, once again, it was sixty days after the annexation, the approval of annexation by LAFCO that he had to have these things completed. Now, coming to December, underground work was being done. My inspector went out there and we didn't have plans. We asked for them, um, and, in the state of California, in the fire code, it says, um, if it's a private fire line, it has to be done by a licensed, C-16 licensed contractor, which the people that were doing it were not. And plans were not submitted per C-16. And that's the reason why we requested to sign off on the plans, whether, if the city had those plans or Mr. Felix had the plans, but I, I believe we were on the same page with the city in the sense that we went out there to ask for the plans, why the work was being done without approval from us. So now, if the installation was already done for the hydrant in the front and possibly for the back, then we still didn't do an inspection on it. So this is where we sit. So, the work was being done, yes, but there is a process of approval, submit the plans, the plans come to us, but when work's being done, we, we have the right to either stop the work or question, you know, what's going on. So, and that's what we did.
Okay, thank you. You haven't received any plans, additional plans for the construction of the line for the hydrants? Before the work was started?
No, sir.
Because I have looking at a construction bid in September. Had you received anything in September? How many hydrants are supposed to be on the property?
Well, I sent the comment letter and there were supposed to be two, one in the front and one in the back because standard's three hundred feet, within three hundred feet. The next closest one is Roserito, so it wasn't going to be sufficient.
Right, but inside the fence line, two hydrants?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just seeing...
Actually, one, one on the street, on the sidewalk, on the sidewalks, city, city right away, and then a private one in the back.
So one on the property?
Yes, sir, one.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Yeah. Anytime. Yeah.
If we step to the time extension, do we have any other questions from commissioners? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, they want to speak to that.
Dile que eso es lo que yo no entiendo, que como dice el que no teníamos permiso de los bomberos, si el plano lo aprobaron cuando nos anexamos a LAFCO... si el plano lo aprobaron cuando nos anexamos a LAFCO, dile.
So he says that's exactly, um, what he doesn't understand. How, uh, they say that we didn't have permission from the fire department when in LAFCO they approved it. So that's what he doesn't understand.
Y dile que el problema de que no nos conectamos a los dos meses...
And the problem why he didn't connect in two months...
Fue porque Jess Carter, Jess Carter, no cumplió con el contrato.
Jess Carter didn't, um, finish the contract.
Y se los puedo hacer llegar, dile.
And he can get that information to everyone.
Después, se contrató a Dooster, que es el dueño de RACCO.
And then he contracted Dooster, which is a...
RACCO.
A owner in RACCO.
Y tampoco lo terminó.
And he also did not finish the job.
El que lo terminó es Eugenio.
And the person who finished it was Eugenio.
Y él lo terminó la semana pasada.
And he just finished it last week.
El hidrante adentro de la propiedad ya está instalado.
The fire hydrant inside of the property is already installed.
Y el de enfrente que el, el departamento de bomberos está pidiendo...
And the one in front, in the sidewalk, that the fire department is asking for.
Yo pedí desde el 2015 que se instalara y ellos no dieron la aprobación.
He asked since 2015 for it to be installed, but the fire department did not approve it.
Y eso lo tiene él en una carta por escrito.
And, uh, the fire department has it in a letter written.
Que se le entregó a la Ciudad Imperial.
That was also given to, uh, the City of Imperial.
Porque yo les dije que era muy fácil instalar un hidrante enfrente de la yarda.
Because he said that it was going to be easy to install a fire hydrant in the front of the yard.
Y no lo aprobó el departamento de bomberos.
And the fire department did not approve of it at that time.
Esto es lo que tengo que decir.
And that's all he has to say.
Okay, thank you. The other discussions with respect to the point of the time extension. Who was asking time extension, the thirty day extension on the CUP?
No, he's asking for a time extension to continue. So he's asking for more time. Right, that's what we're talking about.
When? So, right now, if he's doing work, he's currently in violation.
Correct.
And so it sounds like work's still ongoing.
Yes.
So you're working, he's working in violation. Gets a time extension, how long is that for? Is there like a, is it just...
It, it is up to the commissioners. Um, that's the decision, that's what I mean. He, he also provided that, a plan that he said he was gonna finish it between twenty to forty days, so...
Okay.
That could be a starting point.
So we've broken it up into three pieces. Would we like to make a recommendation on whether or not to approve the time extension to meet the conditions of approval?
On the document, I'm sorry, on the document that he provided like a timeframe, what's the ending date on it that he said he'd have it completed by?
Documenting.
Or like the, the project schedule for his completion that he provided where it said twenty to forty days?
No, he, he said it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. I'd like to know what date he's asking for as far as how much longer for his time extension.
He says at the minimum, two months.
I think, can we ask him to do his due diligence and get everything in order and create like a timeline of what he actually needs, because right now, we just have him telling us this, this and this. You know, and I don't want him coming back and saying, oh, I didn't say that. You know, I want it all written down if I'm gonna vote on it. If we do.
Well, I, you, you could certainly request something in writing, but I, I, what I heard, the translation is, is a minimum of two months.
Yeah, I'd like to know a maximum.
I'm thinking he said, I'm wondering if he said maximum, because we've heard twenty to forty days, now we're hearing...
Two months.
Two months. So, I, I, it's not unreasonable for the commission. It's his application for a time extension. It's not unreasonable to get very clearly on the record, a date. What is, what is the date that he's requesting? Give, give the commission a specific date.
Exactly, as specifically as possible is the time extension request.
Específicamente, así como muy específico, cuál es el día o cuál es el tiempo que necesita.
Se supone que se va a terminar en cuarenta días, si el tiempo nos deja, porque todo lo que sigue depende del tiempo.
If time permits, he would need forty days.
Forty days.
Yes.
If we give you forty days and no more, you can have it done, signed off by the fire department and ready.
Dile que si, mientras no llueva, dile que mientras no llueva, no tenemos problema.
Yeah.
The entire project can be finished in forty days.
Todo, es que dile que ya, ya no falta más que el pavimento que ya están por trabajar, que ya van a ir a poner las estacas para pavimentar, la banqueta, la barda y el segundo hidrante, es todo lo que hace falta.
So he says it would be possible if the climate remains constant and not as it has been the past two days. And yes, because all that's left is really just the pavement, the sidewalk, the fire hydrant and just to fix the wall.
Entonces, se supone que el, 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 el fire department, o sea, el hidrante lo ponen en tres días.
So the fire hydrant is supposed to be done in three days.
La banqueta la van a poner en dos semanas.
The sidewalk to be done in two weeks.
Y el pavimento lo ponen en otras dos semanas.
And the pavement would take another two weeks.
Y la barda va más o menos a la par de ese tiempo.
And the wall would be fixed between those, the, the time of those fixtures.
Y el jardín pues es desértico, o sea, es más o menos en el mismo tiempo todo. Que más o menos es un promedio entre treinta y cuarenta días más o menos.
And the garden would be fixed as well, along with the other things.
Entonces, se supone que ya no hay ningún permiso por sacar porque se supone que ya todo está autorizado.
So at the moment, he doesn't think that he needs another permit because everything is supposed to be approved.
Ahorita no hemos podido hacer nada porque está lloviendo y tenemos que esperar que el agua baje para poder, que los, la gente que van a, a poner el pavimento, la, la banqueta y lo demás, para poder empezar.
And right now, he hasn't been working on that because of the rain. Um, because of, of the people, the contractors that are going to finish the sidewalk and the pavement. They, they haven't done that because of the rain the last two days.
Que ahorita ya nos, ya los contratistas, ya no hay problema, ya tenemos el contrato, ya tenemos todo. Lo único que ocupamos es que el tiempo mejore y empezar.
So right now, he just, he has contractors, he has a contract. It seems like everything is ready to keep on going, except for the weather, but hopefully that gets better.
Entonces, se supone que no debemos de tardar más de cuarenta días.
So, according to him, he shouldn't go past forty days.
Por eso estoy pidiendo veinte días más por cualquier cosa del tiempo.
That's why he's just asking forty days and twenty days more, just in case any other obstacle comes his way.
So he's asking for sixty days.
So this is a...
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, once again, I'm asking for the, with respect to the time extension on this project, would somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that if I'm doing the arithmetic right, sixty days from today would be April thirty. Now, you have the discretion to do something different, but the request before you is a time extension to complete the improvements through April thirty, 2020.
Sixty calendar days.
Sixty calendar days, correct. That's what I understood him to be requesting, that's the request. So you could do all of that, none of that, or something.
So the amendments?
Can we hear the, can we, can we vote on them separately?
Yes.
So like at the end? So go on to the next item and then vote on them separately or no?
We should vote on them individually as we discuss them and then...
That's, that's one way to do it. I mean, if, if, if you feel like you wanna kind of take them as a group, I suppose you could do that. I think the thought was to kind of get, get them behind you, but... I think the thought from staff was to take each item individually, vote on them as you came up. If you feel like you want to hear, go through the other parts and, and then take them up individually at that point, I think you have the discretion to do that as well.
Name it as a motion.
When I trigger...
That is correct, if you don't give them a time extension, then the motion would be to the night, to revoke the...
Yes. So that's why I'm saying, do you want to hear it all before we make that or... I mean, I'm, I'm game with what you say.
If you want, if you want to hear additional testimony with respect to other things, because you think it might help you make a decision about the time extension.
We can do that.
That's what you would...
Sorry.
Do you want to continue? Okay. So at this time, we're not gonna, we're not going to, uh, vote or rule on the time extension. We would like to continue hearing testimony. And the next piece of testimony we would like to hear about is the amendments to the CUP. If I have that, if I understand that correctly, O'Conne?
Correct.
Okay, sir, if you want to come up and talk about the amendments to the CUP, do you understand how we're proceeding right now, sir? Would you like to come up now and discuss the amendments to the CUP that you're proposing?
Would that be the hour of the workers?
Hours of operation, that is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, dile que estamos pidiendo la extensión de horario.
He's asking for an extension of hours of operation.
Por el problema que tenemos por el tráfico de Los Ángeles.
Because of the traffic in LA.
Desde el principio cuando nos dieron el horario, que nos dieron?
Since the beginning when he got the hours of operation that, um, they gave him.
Les comenté que no se iba a poder.
He commented that that would be almost impossible.
Ahora dile.
Now.
Realmente, los carros que llegan de lunes a viernes...
Really, the trucks that come in from Monday to Friday.
Son cuatro a cinco...
Four are four to five.
En todo el día.
All day.
Después de horario...
After hours.
Es uno o dos.
It's either one or two.
El resto de los troques...
The rest of the trucks.
Llegan entre sábado y domingo.
Come in between Saturday and Sunday.
Que es cuando llegan y cuando se van.
Which is when they come in and when they go.
El lunes en la mañana...
Monday morning.
Aparecerán entre ocho y diez camiones.
There will be about eight or ten trucks.
Lo que es martes, miércoles y jueves.
On Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
La yarda está vacía.
The yard is pretty much empty.
Empiezan a llegar.
Then they start coming.
El viernes a mediodía.
Friday at noon.
Entonces, eso es lo que estamos pidiendo nomás, dile, no estamos pidiendo, ni estamos aumentando el número de flota, ni estamos pidiendo más, al contrario, dile.
Okay, so that's what he's asking right now. He really isn't asking to increase the number of trucks that come in or come out. He's just here to inform you that's how many trucks come in and out throughout the week.
A partir del veintitrés de marzo...
Uh, starting March twenty-third.
Se van a quedar parados...
They're gonna be stopped.
Treinta camiones.
Thirty trucks.
Porque no tengo ni para la seguridad, ni para las placas.
Because currently, he does not have money for insurance or for license plates.
Por el problema que tenemos de la pandemia.
No, Corona.
Sí.
Because of the, of the problem that we're going through worldwide, uh, coronavirus.
Si esto sigue como está...
One moment, one of the points that I haven't gotten, I haven't heard yet, real quick. What is the extension he's asking for? We understand he wants one, but you all haven't told us the hours of extension.
Que es horas extensión?
Sí.
De operación?
Sí.
Yes, he does.
Can you clarify those hours for us?
Puedes clarificar las horas?
Más o menos hasta las diez.
Um, if it could be until ten.
Pero no para trabajar en la yarda, dile, simplemente para llegada nomás.
But not for people to work in the yard, just for trucks to get in.
And how early in the morning?
Y qué tan temprano en la mañana.
Salen a las más o menos entre cinco y seis de la mañana.
Between five AM and six AM.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Yes, el lunes a viernes. Yes.
So you're not gonna have trucks come in on the weekend anymore?
So no vas a tener troques viniendo en los fines de semana?
Si llegan, dile, si llegan, sábado y domingo llegan.
Yes, some will come. Pero qué horas?
Llegan en el transcurso, ahí no salen a medianoche, llegan de ocho a cuatro.
But on the weekends, they'll come between eight AM and four PM.
Yes.
And the weekdays was about five AM till what time?
Till ten PM.
El sábado y domingo no salen a madrugada, dile.
Saturday and Sunday, they won't be leaving early morning.
If I understand right now, he is not approved to work on the revocation, is that right?
That's correct, only Monday to Friday.
So it is from seven AM to eight thirty? So anything arriving right now is in violation of the CUP?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do we have anybody who would like to also speak on this? Uh, with respect to the conditions of the, uh, the amendments to the CUP? Okay. So we're still under, uh, public testimony and hearings. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Since we're gonna take all this at once, we're just divvying up into little pieces. So do we have any questions on this particular item? I know that there was some, we didn't have anyone here to speak, but y'all saw the movies and that was provided in your information packages?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Uh, just for the record, we were provided with several short notes of work that was being done on the weekends. Is that correct? They were just the weekends, right? Okay, thank you. All right, since we wanted to do all of this together, barring anything else, we'll go ahead and then discuss the revocation of the CUP. And we have staff's recommendation already in your packages. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for anybody here with respect to the revocation of the CUP?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, the basis of the revocation is the fact that he's been operating outside the authorized hours and he hasn't completed the conditions of approval within the timeframe established by that, by, by the CUP.
That is correct.
And, and those, that's the basis.
That's the basis of the revocation.
That's why we tried to break it up into three parts. So, the reason for denial, or, or the...
Revocation.
Is because of the failure to complete the project and not complying with the CUP. So now that you've heard all the evidence and the testimony, how would you like to, would somebody like to make a motion?
Part or...
I'd like to ask him another question.
Certainly.
In regards to him working, or for staff, I'm sorry. Um, in regards to him in violation of the CUP, how, how was he, was he noticed through like code enforcement? Or how was he noticed prior to getting to this point?
Well, he wasn't noticed at Sp... It's part of the package. You have a notice of violation indicating all the conditions of approval he hasn't fulfilled.
But the operating, the operational time complaint that purely came from the citizenry, it wasn't like you guys caught him doing it or something?
That is correct.
And this has been an ongoing issue?
You have a couple of videos in the weekend, so.
Okay. Now, when you say we have videos, we want to make those videos part of the record. So we received videos from a neighbor?
Correct.
From Mr. Van Dreschi?
Yes.
Okay. And have you, has anybody watched those videos?
Yes, we have.
Oh, you all have?
Yes, I've seen them all, yeah.
Oh, we got them.
Everybody but me. Okay. Okay.
I think they're on my phone.
Okay. And so, Mr. Van, and as I understand it, Mr. Van Dreschi, on the video depicts the time that they were taken. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the videos depict trucks coming and going?
Coming and going, yes.
Okay. And is there more than one date that he submitted videos?
There's at least six videos. Let me just make it clear.
Multiple dates and hours.
Nine videos, all of them on the weekend.
Okay. And Mr. Van Dreschi submitted all nine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what we haven't heard is that, for example, is that Mr. Felix was unaware of the time limitations. In fact, there is a request for the amendment that has to do with the fact that there's traffic in L.A. And rather than deal with that issue, he chose just to continue operating.
Make a motion to deny Resolution Number PC 2020-04.
Second it. I have a motion and I have a second. Please call for the vote. Oh, wait a second. I have to close the public hearing part. We will officially close the public hearing at 7:40. Any final decisions or discussions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Please call for the vote.
Sheriff Bernard?
Yes.
Yes.
Sheriff Pardon?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that concludes that piece of action. Going on to now. We have the... Do you understand what happened?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have Section E, the commissioners' reports.
Can we clarify that to the applicant, what just happened?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do you all understand what just happened?
No, he doesn't know.
Okay. We just had a motion and a second to deny the... How do I say the phrase exactly? We have a motion to deny the granting of the time extension. And, yes, so we are denying the time extension and we are revoking the conditional use permit.
So he's asking what will happen now?
Othman, and Dennis, you can correct me. He has the option.
Of bringing us up to city council?
Am I correct?
Yeah. Before we get to that, now, the motion didn't include any reference to amendment, to the amendment part of it. Is that right? It was a motion to deny the time extension and a motion to...
Revoke the CUP.
Now, in the packet, aren't there two separate resolutions?
There's one resolution.
One resolution for everything.
So the motion was to adopt the resolution which includes... Does that resolution address the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so is the intention to adopt the resolution which includes the amendment? I think you should probably clarify that.
Okay. You can go to the rest of the... You can go to the rest of the...
Or did the motion include all three things? Okay.
Yeah, because it's all in one item.
Right.
Resolution Number PC 20.
So, getting to where we are, under the ordinance, he can appeal your decision to the city council.
Do you understand that?
In the meantime...
Let him respond first, please.
Okay. In the meantime, since the permit is revoked, if he continues to operate, he'll be in violation of a city ordinance. Violation of a city ordinance is a misdemeanor. So he could be prosecuted for violating the city ordinance. If he continues to operate, the city could choose to seek a civil remedy in the form of an injunction. So continuing to operate is going to carry with it probably some further consequences from the city in the way of potential criminal citation or civil citation.
Duty penalty.
In the meantime, though, if he could appeal the decision to the city council. Under the ordinance, though, once revoked, that doesn't mean, his appeal doesn't mean he can continue to operate during the pendency of his appeal. The revocation is effective now, and even if he appeals, absent a granting of the appeal by the city council, he can't operate.
Other understand that?
So, this is my question to us. So if, since you guys declined the CUP, does that mean that he cannot operate right now?
That is correct.
Okay. Y diles que si, cuando se viene y se pidió aquí, estaba el licenciado Dennis Morita, se les dijo que no se iba a poder con las condiciones que ellos estaban poniendo. Um, so what he's saying right now is that, Dennis Morita, I'm sorry, Mr. Morita, he said that you were hearing his last hearing when he came. Is that true? Dile que el licenciado Fox le comentó a él, él en ese tiempo, era el abogado de la ciudad, y el abogado, y el licenciado Fox le dijo que no íbamos a poder cumplir y que íbamos a caer en violación. And the last time my dad came with Mr. Fox, his attorney, and they said, they clearly stated that it was not going to be possible to follow the city's rules because it's a 24-hour trucking company. Y eso se les dijo antes de que aprobaran la anexación. Y el abogado les dijo que si no iban a poder ayudarnos con eso, que mejor nos quedábamos en el condado. And the attorney told you guys, or Mr. Morita, if you were here, that they were not going to be able to follow this because it was a 24-hour. And if it was going to be that way, if the annexation wasn't approved, then they would stay with the county instead of going to the city. Dile que debe haber un video porque fue aquí en esta misma sala cuando se aprobó el use permit. And there should be a video when the use permit approved because it was in the same room. Y se les dijo que era imposible cumplir con un horario de siete de la mañana a cuatro de la tarde porque era una compañía de troques. And it was said that it was going to be impossible to follow the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. because it was a trucking company. Hemos sido muy respetuosos. Hasta ahorita nosotros no hemos provocado ningún accidente. Cuantas cosas nos ha pedido la ciudad, hemos aportado. Every single time, they have been respectful in the way that the truck drivers come in with their trucks. They haven't caused any accidents on the road. When they're coming back because of this, they know of this. And... Y evitamos lo más que se pueda llegar a madrugada para tratar de molestar a los vecinos. And they have avoided coming, they have avoided as much as they can, coming in the mornings to stop from making it to the neighbors so that they don't wake up. Los nueve videos que tienen. The nine videos that you guys have been provided with. De una sola persona, la misma que se paró aquí a hablar. Is of one person, the same person who came here to speak. Entonces, se me hace algo muy injusto. So he thinks it's something a little unfair. Que estén dejando sin trabajo. That you guys will be leaving people without work. A sesenta familias. Which would be a total of 60 families. Porque al momento que ellos automáticamente hoy cerraron las puertas de la yarda. Because the day that the doors of the yard were closed. Dejaron sin trabajo. The 60 families have been affected without work. Entonces, cuando se les dijo desde el principio. So when you guys may have been notified since the beginning that it was going to be over-hours job. Entonces, como ahora ellos también abortaron, yo también, yo no quiero estar dentro de la ciudad, dile. So, since you guys have revoked and gone against. Y como no he... He also would like to not be part of the city. Entonces, como no he terminado de hacer las cosas que la ciudad necesita. So since he has not finished doing some of the things that the city needs. Y no me aprobaron el tiempo para terminar el proyecto. And he hasn't been approved of time that he needs. Quiero regresarme al condado. He would like to go back to county. Porque en el condado, las horas de operación no tienen horario. Because in the county, he is allowed to work 24 hours. Porque es M3. Because it's M3. Entonces, les pido una disculpa. So he's saying sorry. Pero tengo que llover por sesenta familias que dependen de mí. But he has to look out for 60 families that depend on him. Y desde el primer momento. And since the first moment. Yo les dije que no se iba a poder cumplir con el reglamento que ustedes mismos pusieron. He said that it wasn't going to be able to follow the rules that he had been put on. En ningún momento yo estoy tratando de violar algo que desde el primer momento yo mismo les dije que no íbamos a poder cumplir. In no moment was he trying to violate something from what he said is going to be to accept. El tiempo para construir las cosas que se nos dio, desafortunadamente, no ha quedado por mí. The time that he has had been given to complete the project, unfortunately, wasn't because of him. Desafortunadamente, tuve que estar en contra de la IID. Unfortunately, he had to go, um... De la IID. IID. He had to go against the IID. Por dos tiempos. For two times. Una para mover los postes que me costó 90 mil dólares. One to change and move the posts, which was $9,000. Y otra para irme por abajo del canal, que me costó casi 95 mil dólares. And another time, like we said, to go under the canal, which was approximately a cost of $95,000. Entonces, creo yo que yo he demostrado como persona y como empleador. And he thinks that he has shown as a person and as an employer. La mejor de la disposición mía y de mis empleados. The best position of his and his employees. Y por eso estoy aquí al frente. And that's why he's here up front. Dando la cara por mí y por ellos. To give his face for him, but not only for him, but his employees. Si ustedes quieren saber quién soy yo. If you guys want to know who he is. Yo fui diputado local en México. He was a deputy, a local deputy in Mexico. Y sé por qué es lo que ustedes están haciendo. And he knows exactly your guys' position. Les pido disculpa. He, once again, for sorry. Pero si ustedes necesitan que yo vaya casa por casa a la Ciudad Imperial a conseguir firmas para que me dejen seguir operando por las sesenta familias que represento. But if you guys want him to go looking house for house in Imperial Valley for signatures to represent 60 families. Voy a tener que hacerlo yo y mi... Then him and our family are going to be able to go.
Thank you very much for these comments. And as our city attorney has indicated, you will have the ability, the opportunity, if you desire, to appeal to the city council of this decision.
Como el abogado de la ciudad dijo, que vas a poder contradecir esto y hacer eso. Okay, ¿qué va a pasar con la gente, dile? Con los trabajadores, ¿qué le va a pasar? O sea, no pueden cerrar así nomás por cerrar. O sea, no pueden decir, parte de mañana no puedes trabajar. And he's asking what's going to happen with the families and the 60 families? And also what's going to happen if it's just going to close night to day?
Commissioner, do you want to answer that question? Or can you answer that question?
I mean, that is a unfortunate fallout from the fact that he didn't comply timely, in a timely way with the conditions, and then believed in the plea. And when the court saw January 25 that it wasn't going to get done, yet after the city sends a notice of violation, that he reacted now. Getting back to, I recall when he interviewed with his lawyer. That record will speak for itself. I frankly don't have a memory of him saying at that point that you can impose a condition of hours, but there's no way I can comply with it. I frankly do not recall that. If they had said that, I would think what the suggestion would have been, then you better appeal because that condition is in there. Instead, what you have is acceptance of... No, with that condition, no appeal, and then just going ahead and operating however he needs to operate without regard to the condition. So whatever was said with respect to we can't meet the condition, and I frankly don't recall that if it was said. He was aware of the condition. And we are where we are because he chose not to comply with it rather than go through the process. Now, with respect to disincorporation, there's a process to do that. Whether Lafco and the county would be interested, you know. I can't speak what the city's position might be because Lafco is going to be interested in what the city... But there is a process to disincorporate and take the property out of the city. And I would refer Mr. Felix to Lafco for him to...
La pregunta es, ¿qué va a pasar? O sea, necesitamos tiempo. So he's saying what's going to happen because he's going to need time. Por eso, o sea, yo estoy de acuerdo de que está bien.
You may appeal the decision to the city council, and you may also inquire with Lafco about an incorporation.
Yo estoy de acuerdo de que está bien. Pero mi pregunta es, no quisiera caer en violación en algo que ya estamos en violación a partir de momento. So he says he agrees, but what he wouldn't like to do is fall in violation of something that is... Entonces dile, yo necesito saber qué es lo que voy a hacer. O sea, en un país donde todos creemos en la palabra, palabra le he puesto, y les, desafortunadamente, no es mi trabajo. O sea, yo no lo puedo agarrar y ir a hacerlo. O sea... So he says that, but he's just wondering, like, what... Because it's already going to, the time right now, he's already in violation. Not because of something that he did. Because if it were for him, then he would have cut in a shovel. He done it already. Entonces dile que yo necesito que me ayuden... Te dile que yo necesito que me ayuden con un tiempo para buscar, una, para buscar un amparo y revocar lo que ellos acaban de decir ahorita, o dos, para buscar otro lugar.
So he says either he would need some time to either one, revoke what you guys, find out how he's going to revoke what you guys just said, or two, find another place to situate.
We understand that from tonight's proceedings, the CUP has been revoked.